After the pledge allegiance, I will.
All right, if you would, after the pledge of allegiance, please remain standing.
Yeah.
Our pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we would like to take a moment of silence in remembrance of Shirley Campbell for years of dedicated service to the town sunman and out of respect for her family and her contributions to this community. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, call to order, meeting twelve eighteen twenty-five. I got all parties in attendance, including legal counsel. First item for business tonight is the adoption of the agenda.
I'll make a motion and permit.
Did you add anything to it? Oh, second.
Thank you. That takes us to reports. Marshall, you're up.
We've got a copy of our activity. Obviously, November, we had that first little, everybody get your snowshoes on the driving. But we were extremely busy. I have a lot of agency assist. I've been trying to let you guys know the agency assist. But you know, I got, you know, Ripley County about seven times, state police about eight, fire EMS, couple of P's, Dearborn County, a couple. Reason being is because, yes, you know, and to the public, it's kind of like, man, we, we see them south of the county. We see them north of the county. We see them on the interstate. Also, I wish that I could mark down every time that a state police or a county officer does something that's down for us. So we always try to return the favor. There's always a good working relationship with all the departments around us. Morgan Allen, she got all her coursework done.
Good job, Morgan.
Last work done, so. She, uh, she's got to get some more ride hours in. I got a lot of respect for her on that. She could have utilized the hours that she has already rode. And she chose not to. She felt like she needed to start at the end of her class and, and claim the hours from there on out. So I kind of respect, I kind of respect that decision on her part. Also, we utilized her again yesterday on, on a call. So it's getting a little bit more, I think sooner as springtime comes, it's going to get a little bit busy for her on, on what we're trying to utilize her for. Uh, I have something else. I forget what it was, so. Would like to thank, uh, I've said this before I even moved to Sunman or become a Sunman officer. When I was with Ripley County, oh-six, oh-seven, and we would respond up here to wrecks and accidents and stuff like that. I always said it and after what happened Monday, we have no clue how blessed we are with, uh, Sunfire and some EMS. So it's always nice when, uh, you're going through something hard and you pull up on something that has to do with you. And you turn around one time and, uh, the firemen are just lined up supporting, having our back. So we, uh, we really appreciate some of the fires, some of the EMS, Dearborn County Sheriff's Office. Thankfully, my son is okay, don't know how. Good Lord was with him. That's all there is to it. But, uh, with that being said, uh, I don't have anything else unless I'm forgetting something. We've reached out to Brain Bucket. Is that what it's called?
Yes.
Uh, they're designing some new logos for our cars. I don't forget. It might take me a while, you know. I gotta treat you like I do my wife, Randy, you know. Give me a while here. I'm working on it.
Understood.
They're, they're going to come up with a design, uh, for the car. We were going to stay with what's on the charger. But I kind of want to go with something reflective. Just because, once again, uh, shout out to the police department, not to my own horn, all of our depart, all of our officers. You know, during adverse weather, I always feel that it's these small departments' jobs to be out and about. Patrol be seen. Uh, when it's zero degrees out with wind blowing twenty mile an hour, drive through the neighborhoods, make sure somebody hasn't slipped and fell getting in their car and they're laying out there freezing to death or, you know. So, uh, with the adverse weather and everything else, we definitely put a lot of hours in just patrolling the streets and, and making sure everything was okay. But, uh, I, I really want to go a little. I have mixed emotions about it. When you're trying to set on a house or watch something, you don't want to be seen. But then at the same time, I think when we're patrolling a small town and stuff like that, we need to be reflective. The citizens need to see us drive by. They need to know that we're out and about. So hopefully, uh, by the next business meeting, I'll have a pretty cool design and maybe even one done by then. But I'm going to do like, uh, the board request that I'm gonna, whatever we do, we're going to go across the board, make all the cars look the same. And then they'll have it on file down there. So if we get something else, all we gotta do is call them. Let them know. But I'm sure he's going to bring it up in his report. But, uh, the town trucks, I don't know if you guys noticed him or not, but they look, they look pretty good driving around with something all over them, so. Rather than that, I don't have anything else unless you guys have something.
Thank you.
All right. Appreciate you guys.
Thanks.
Next, we have Officer Powell with the ordinance violation.
Sorry, guys. As I said, behind.
No, we don't have.
But there are going to be two added to the list, just, uh, vehicle violations. Ryan did get ahold of me. We're within the next, let's say, this coming month, we're going to be pretty busy. Couple areas in town, uh, so you'll probably get a nice stack of yellow paper. Or in that. No, it's not really that busy.
Okay.
I'll make sure I put on the report too. There's a couple, uh, properties that just never have, didn't. I'll, I'll note it on there so you guys see it, but they do have fines too, so.
Okay.
Snow fell and they can't cut grass now, so we'll just pick it back up in March, so. Or that, guys don't have none, I'm good.
Okay, thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On your activity report on ordinance violations, cross out zero, put two for me. Since you filed that with the other minutes.
Have we, uh?
Where is that?
You got one.
Right there.
Oh.
Change it to.
Oh, yeah, I mailed you.
Have you got into anything with the interlocal agreement yet with Batesville? Or is it still in its infancy?
Did we sign that last board meeting?
I'm sorry?
Okay.
The inter ordinance agreement.
Yep.
So we got that signed. Have you heard anything from Batesville?
I, I have not received it back signed.
Okay, we reached out to Batesville because I still, I'd like to, we're pushing it towards the end of the year, but hopefully by like the second week, definitely in January, I want to get that started.
Okay.
Uh, we were able to, uh, get some printers. So all the cars will have good printers to where we can print everything off and hopefully just file everything through them, so.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you. Uh, Connor, you're up.
Connor, I put auto sampler on there, so my bad because I don't think we're ready for the council part, are we? Okay.
You guys should have a copy of my report for the month, but also a little write-up on the repair we finally got done today. We finally got the sewer leak out there on County Line taken care of today. Uh, I believe Cheryl's gonna come to y'all about writing up a claim or something because whenever we got out there, it was obvious that it wasn't a natural break, that it was hit with something or it just, you can tell with the pictures that are attached. Uh, that write-up.
We have a witness stating that it was the electric company.
Yes, the gentleman who built his house there said all the work he's done over the last year has been in the left side of his yard. And the only work or the last work that was done in that area is that electric line being put in that you can see in the photo.
I think I need the council's permission to file a claim.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
When did the electric work get done, do we know?
He said about a year ago.
Which lines up with about when they built the place.
I'm not saying it'll be successful, but.
At least we can try.
So we got a motion to file a claim for the damage to the sewer.
Who, who are we filing against? Like you did it.
It would be Duke.
Duke.
Duke? Yeah.
Uh, Carol motion, so you want a second?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry to hear.
Thank you.
Onto some other matters. Uh, we finally got lot seventeen repaired. It has an electric heater that is actively reading. The good news with the current model that we have is that the wire goes in through the back of the casing and is inside of, it is just between the plastic casing and then it's between the siding of their house. So there's no exposed wire. Sewer taps for grills on the Mariana are finally, uh, scheduled. It's been a headache trying to go between just a whole multitude of things, but those are finally taken care of or getting ready to. Uh, the fire hydrant on Maple is also scheduled for replacement. One new thing that we got that's been working absolutely amazing and just in time, actually, we got our new plow and salt box. And, um, the guys were out there during the storm plowing and everything. And it worked amazing. It worked out that they could go out there and plow and then I would come in during the days and do the testing. So it'd be a balance for both of us.
And big thanks to Rising Sun for the grant for the salt.
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, when you replace the hydrant, who's going to do that?
Hertan Elko.
Hertan Elko.
Who?
Hertan Elko.
Hertan Elko, okay.
Should be bubble shame, but don't quote me on that. Well, going to more timely festivities, the Christmas tree is all lit up as we can see throughout town. The Christmas ornaments should be lit up.
Right about now.
Maybe right now.
Well, they have, they did bypass it. They'll stay on all day and all night.
So it turned out with those, that's an issue with a faulty part.
They were doing it this evening.
Yeah, they were out fixing that this evening. Faulty part's going to be replaced next year, but bypassed, so. They're working.
And I will file for an adjustment on the electrical. Don't worry.
We actually got one, for a change, we actually got a repair done that we did not have to like go to a different company about. We, uh, we're having issues with well two. It has a breaker in there. Or the previous breaker that was in there didn't have the correct overdraw on it where that pump runs about fifty amps and it run, or like the overdraw was set to fifty-five. But if it ever like jumped up, it would kick itself out. So we got one in there that now overdraws at sixty-five and we have not had any issues with it since. And some of our to-do, uh, I have a meeting set up, I believe. Yeah, look, reading or like reading back in my email in my head, the, that's going to be about the first of the year. But we have a meeting set before Intag to do another phosphorus trial. Just the last results with everything didn't, came up inconclusive, so we're just going to do it again. Uh, we are gathering the, uh, the blind bed information's been delayed till spring. Just a little bit easier with everything else going on, plus it's just, it's just easier.
And you skipped over the wastewater treatment plant, uh, manual. That's huge and important.
Yes, the wastewater treatment plant, we got a manual out there for everything. We are forever dead and grateful that, uh, the clerk's office up here putting that together for us.
I didn't mean that part. But it was, it was part of our compliance plan, so that was really, it was a, it was a lot.
Uh, this is another thing that was delayed until the spring, Eastern State Rail System. It's just going to be easier for everybody involved to get in there whenever the ground's not saturated in between rain, snow. It's just going to be safer and easier for everybody. And then we are also still gathering ideas on our auto sampler. Granted, I'll be honest with that. I dropped the ball on that because I have an amazing group of coworkers that I get to work with and they actually let me get off for about two weeks this month. So not everything got done.
And there's more options than we thought.
Yes.
Everything's a plug and play.
We can either go for something fancy that does like everything, or we can just dumb it down. But there's a lot to look through on those. Other than, if y'all have any questions, I believe that concludes my report.
There was, uh, last month, we had a leak at, uh, the trailer park and we gave them fourteen days to get it fixed. Did they do that?
It is in the process still. I just got a, uh, eight-one-one notification yesterday from Hertan Elko that they want it located.
I forgot to put that on there for you to remember that. Um, so Hertan Elko did call us and confirm that they had scheduled a while ago and they weren't able to get there. And that's why it had been delayed, so we did not shut them off.
So it's in the works.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else for Connor?
No, thanks, Connor.
I forgot. I have one last thing. I totally forgot. Came through today. I finished my second semester schooling with a ninety-two.
That's right. Good job.
Ezra, good job.
Congratulations.
Ninety-two as a final, but he had like a ninety-eight on homework and.
Good to say you had a ninety-four the first time. You're slipping on us a little bit.
What, um, no more time off.
How much, how much longer, Connor?
Uh, so from what I heard, I have, I will graduate from their apprenticeship in December of next year.
About three months from now, I am able to go take my water certification test.
So the last one is just, I'll be certified and then it's just additional teachings.
Um, there is a three-day prep course that we're going to come ask you for him to attend. It's recommended, yeah.
Recommended. All right, that takes us to the clerk.
Dog meeting minutes. I don't know if there's, you see anything?
Uh-uh, no.
Got any comments on last month's agenda?
No, it's all pretty good.
I'll make a motion.
Utility adjustments. What did I do with everything? Everyone received a fund report. Mm-hmm. All right, we had several. Um, by the way, this process was brought up today and it's an excellent way to handle these. Um, we had a water softener failure. It was confirmed by a plumber. We did an adjustment for three twenty-five ninety-nine. We had a pretty decent billing error and we did figure out why it happened, how it happened. So someone didn't hit the calculate button, so the cons didn't match up to what they were charged. So that was four hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-three cents. Um, we had penalties added after the, the billing and it's an unknown error. It happens from time to time, twenty-four thirty-one. And another no calculation performed for two hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-four cents. And confirmation of a leak on the ground by a plumber, fifty-nine eighty-three. And I have three that are probably coming next month for bursted pipes. We had three calls in, so. And I like to always remind our community that is the perfect thing to do. As soon as you get time, let us know you have that leak so we can document it. Um, so that you have grounds for some relief on that bill. Um, for the month of November, um, this number is huge. Just remember that it includes the sewer extension project numbers as well. Today's eighteenth December. Um, we dished out eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. But like I said, about five hundred thousand of that is the sewer extensions. Not technically our money, but we have to receive it and then write the check.
Are we at retainage release on that then?
Not yet. We're in certificate of substantial completion. Took a year for me, Bill. We'll save that.
That's right.
That's the, that's the golden ticket.
Mm-hmm. And certified payroll was given to Randy. So I just need our fund reports, financial statement, adjustments and APV register, oh, yeah, the register approved. Here it is, I resign.
I'll make a motion.
To what?
Approved the utility adjustment.
Approve that.
Second.
A two, utility adjustment, council payable and APV. Okay.
You got the payroll, right?
Is he a second or?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't hear.
Anything else for the clerk?
No, but I have something to say when you go to the salary ordinance because something changed.
Okay. Well, that's where we're going next, is old business and the twenty-twenty-six salary ordinance is at the top of my list.
So the number for Connor gets position, which is utility manager, that changed because he just finished his semester. So he had his guaranteed increase. So that number changed on the salary ordinance, which you approved last week.
Last week?
Or last month, pending the change that I made in here to, um, for closing allowances to include reserves and volunteers. So it was actually approved with that change on the twentieth of November. However, Connor's number was incorrect because he received a five percent increase for the first of the year. But he receives his guaranteed raise for his end of semester.
What do we go to?
Does that make sense?
What do we go to?
That's the number on here.
The number on there. And then if you want to see, um, the breakdown of everything, I think I did send it to you in the. So his initial number for.
That's what his initial.
Is changing.
What is going to change to that.
Gotcha.
Because he's second year. That doesn't impact our reading, the first reading, does it? We amend it.
Okay. So he's, will need to sign twice tonight.
I'll let you jump in.
Yep. I'm signing nothing till I see ninety-nines.
Go get me another one.
Oh, gosh, I just accidentally tried to leave. Oh, you want. That's for last month. No, unless someone in the presence.
Yeah.
Wants it, right?
Right, unless somebody requests it.
That was target breakfast right there.
Okay.
Two of them, right?
Yeah. We just need a motion.
Do what?
I'll make a motion to approve the.
You sign twice.
Change in Connor's salary?
No, for the twenty-twenty-six salary ordinance.
Oh, for the whole ordinance.
The whole.
On the whole thing. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the salary ordinance.
Yep, second.
Two pages.
Two pages to sign.
Another one.
Okay, that takes us to our planning and zoning ordinance. That we were, or permit process. We have, we drafted an ordinance for.
He's in here. It's basically the same as last month, except I took out the approval part of it. I just, it just says we're asking the county to notify us when an application is made and asking them to give us a copy of the application. And then saying, it does still have the paragraph that says that the clerk's going to be the person that gets it. And then should pass it on to the appropriate town official.
Okay.
But then there's nothing in there about delaying approval or anything of, of that or of them not being able to go forward until, when there's approval. And there's nothing in there about an automatic review at the council. That was the stuff that I chopped out.
So let me see, if, if I want to put a shed in my backyard, I gotta go to the county.
Yep.
And I go, then what do I do? Go to the town?
No. This says that you go to the county and the county sends a copy of it to the town. And if the town does nothing, if you never hear anything from the town, or put it this way, unless you hear something from the town, you're good by just going to the county.
What if I hear something from the town?
Then we'll, we'll have, you'll have to answer the town's questions.
Well, I had, the reason saying, I had a couple of calls, you know, through the month, you know, that said, you can't tell us what to do with our property. No, here we go again, you know.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to tell you what to do with the property. We're just saying we want to get it in a little better hands.
We want to know what people, we want notice. It's not that, it's not that we're trying to stop you from doing anything with your property. We want to know what it is you're doing with your property.
Don't we get that notice from the county?
Yes.
Yes.
And you can say.
Then why?
You would like to talk to them and then we invite them to the next public meeting.
Sure.
If it's something like a sewer tap, you're not going to have to, you know, you'll be notified of it, but, uh, sewer tap's kind of a bad example.
The county is going to issue the permit and if we want to stop it, we have to act immediately.
Yes, yep.
Immediately, that's, that was my question. It was going to be, is there a time, an exact, like two weeks or?
Nope.
Three days or whatever.
We receive notice of any permits that come in from the county. If we have, we've, and we're reserving the right to make an objection, if said objection occurs. But it's basically notice to us to say address one, two, three is going to build a building. And then one of our fine people can go down there and look at it and say, well, I'm going to remind you there's an easement here or there's a utility there that you can't build over and prevent whatever from going on. That would gives us grounds to start with the county and to say, hey, you, we need to talk about this before we give them an approval.
But they've already issued the permit.
Not.
Well, the county should stop if there, if you're, encroach you on the easement, the county ought to stop it.
Yeah, they should. It's just basically adding a check given from our standpoint of.
Yeah, they'll stop it ahead of time.
And they'll know, so Randy can drive by and keep an eye on what's going on.
Basically. But basically, we're going to have to step lively because if somebody has their ducks in a row, they'll get their permit pretty quickly.
Yep.
That's what I was about to ask. It's like, but how long does it usually take to get a permit when you apply?
But it.
It'll do it on site, don't they?
A week or so, I would say.
But it basically gives both parties grounds to say, you were duly notified that this was going to take place. So if you need to act, you need to get out there and act.
So my question is, do we get notified when they apply for the permit?
Yes.
He said when they are issued the permit.
The, the thing says when they were asking for the application.
Okay, all right.
But there again, like I said, if they've got all their ducks in.
Right.
It's not going to take Tad Brinson terribly long to review it. You're asking me exactly how long it's going to take Tad Brinson to do it? I can't tell you.
Yeah.
But if, if they're notifying us when they apply for it.
Yep. Yep.
We should be able to do that at that time. I thought it was, we're going to get notified when they receive the permit. I was like, well, hell, that's too late.
Yeah. It's on application.
All right.
Just so there's no discrepancies on.
And it basically just gives us a chance to make an objection to.
Well, there's all crap breaking loose down at Mile Over One.
Yeah.
Well, then.
The county issued and then, yeah, I, I just don't want to have to go through all that.
It's.
We don't either.
Yep.
Mile Over's not the only one.
Yeah, we don't either, but we also don't want to, we don't want to be running around with wool over our eyes saying, well, we didn't know anything was going on.
Yeah.
So.
We already got an email saying pull a hometown property that we can utilize.
Do we want to, want to, let's teach a little, little bit more talking about this thing or you're going, you're going to try to push it through now? I'm thinking let's wait.
Why, why are we going to keep kicking the can?
Do some more talking about it. Or, I mean, I mean, that's what I'm thinking. Because I had some pretty good, I had some pretty good calls all night. I'm burning up my phone here this morning.
Why aren't they here then?
Hi.
They should come to the meeting.
Well, town ordinances do tell us what we can and can't do.
I think, I think if we, if we move into it and we have it in writing, we can hand them a copy of the ordinance and it's drafted and noted and then they can make themselves familiar with it.
Yes. I guess I would say this is. This isn't going to give us the right to put a halt to something just because we don't like it. We're going to have, the only way we're going to be able to, really, it's kind of a second check that, I mean, the county already isn't supposed to issue a building permit for somebody to do something in the easement or in the right of way or on top of a utility. They're, they're already not supposed to do that and by and large, they don't do that. You see? And so what, this, this doesn't, this doesn't give us the right to say something like, oh, I don't think this guy needs a swimming pool. It gives us the right to say, well, this particular swimming pool appears to be inside the right of way.
You can build your swimming pool, but move it over five foot.
Yeah.
Essentially.
Fair enough, I like it.
It's just a, a, an added check.
It's an extra set of eyes for Tad too.
Yep.
Yeah, that's true.
That's true.
That's protection from, you're never doing something stupid.
They wouldn't dare.
I don't know, I don't know about that.
Well.
I'm not sure that it is that. It's a, it's a protection against them doing something illegal.
I might see it a little bit.
Thoughts?
I'm gonna make motion to approve the ordinance.
Nope. I will second.
I have a question. And I'm sorry, it's a little late, but it just popped in my head. If the second reading is in 2026, should I change that to 202601?
No, cause they, cause they, the process started.
Okay. I, um, never had that go from one year to, no, I was just curious.
The reality is, it doesn't make any difference, what you call it. The, the purpose of putting the numbers on them is to keep track of, is to help keep track of when they were for them.
Okay, thank you.
Whether, you know, whether, whether it's the December of 2025 or January of 26, still tells us, ah, right there at the end of 25.
Are we signing the top or the bottom?
Top. But, well, it'll have to be, oh, Carol, you signed the bottom one.
Okay.
It's not the end of the world.
Yeah.
Or not.
You're gonna get.
You have to read it twice.
You're gonna get one signature and then the second.
What's this one?
That's the ordinance.
You'll just have to sign it.
Well, I don't need to sign it, you, you can hurt me by now. They're gonna be yelling at me if I sign it. Okay. You gotta give me a little.
Pass it back. Cause Carol needs to sign in the right place, thank you.
That's true.
Gotta do a try for Sunday.
And that's okay, I, I got a lot of problems.
Okay. So we're gonna move on to the 812 Angels. Uh, last month, we had a presentation for a group that was looking to start a nonprofit, that was looking for a donation from us.
They're not here tonight, um, they're gonna come back when they're 501, 3C.
Um, they're in the process, they're just not across the finish line yet.
Yeah, so we table that until they provide us the right. Okay.
Should we bring up the fact that we might need to seek some little agreements to protect us?
Uh, you're talking about.
Safe passage and other donations we make.
Yeah, most things come in as, when those applications come in, we'll have to, we'll have to, instead of just giving them the money, we're gonna have to actually have to sign a little contract that says, we gave you the money and here's what you're doing with it. We'll do that.
Okay.
As they, as and when they apply, I would say.
Okay, I'll motion to table 812 Angels.
I'll second it.
And you'll probably have to do the same thing for the next one then.
Okay, uh, county specific contributions.
That would include the safe way and, or safe passage in lifetime.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, it's really, it's not unlike when you give money to the fire department. There's a little agreement that goes on, here's what we're getting from.
I would like to see how you live safe. I would like to say that.
So basically where we're at with that safe passage in lifetime, we need to draft a contract, so, okay, motion to table until next month.
I'll second it.
Okay, next item is establish a COD fund and retroactively approve.
Yeah, so we have to, um, the one thing I did miss on my list for putting the riverboat money into a certificate of deposit is I need to ask the council for permission to establish a fund for that to be noted in and, uh, interest that we get reseeded into that fund, it needs to be a home rule and it needs to be numbered between 2500 and 2599. So we'll be utilizing the next one up, I think we have two home rules right now. But I need permission to open that fund and I need you to retroactively approve it to, was it the last meeting or October, it was October meeting? It was October. So it was my oversight not to have that included in the, in that meeting. Learn as you go.
Okay. All per use setting up the COD fund.
Did you, you motioned it? Now, this is the one here, how much was, how much money was it?
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
You approved it in October, but I didn't ask permission to establish a new line item.
Yeah, I accepted that.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't actually change.
It doesn't change anything.
Where the money is or where it goes. It's a.
Okay.
It's an accounting thing.
Alright, so that concludes old business, we're on to new business. Uh, we have an item for comp flex in vacation time.
It's just the normal end of year, if they have any flex time left over, permission to move it into 2026. None of them have a ton, but with the holidays coming and they're probably not going to be able to use them all. I think last year you were, allowed us to extend them to the end of March.
They approved me to take 40 hours into.
2026.
That's what I have on the table now with what I'm going through at home, I might be able to.
Take some of it, or maybe all of it. But basically, if there's just a little bit left over, we're asking to, to move it into 2026.
And make it, uh, put a, a drop dead date on it of March 31.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for that.
That comp flex and vacation, everything.
Uh, comp flex and vacation, I didn't, I can't do PTO, but I think everyone used it anyway.
Oh, yeah.
How we do that, go ahead.
Okay, I'll second that one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, fifth Saturday initiative. I do have paper on this. Cheryl, if you wanna describe it. Yep.
They're asking all the towns to participate in the fifth Saturday, um, they're trying to promote some economic development and promote local businesses. They're asking everybody for a contribution so that they can purchase these bags, there's gifts, um, there are, what do you call it, like scavenger hunts and all, anything to encourage to, to visit your local merchants and to encourage purchasing in that town. So they're, they're asking everyone to, um, contribute if we can, and so I asked her to make up an invoice for it. Cause it is actually purchasing bags, it's not a donation, you're actually purchasing something. I thought, we do have economic development funds budgeted this year.
That was gonna be my question, is it coming out of this year's money and do you still have it?
Yes, we have not used any of our economic development except for, I think, one luncheon for, uh, a meeting.
Okay.
Which was maybe a hundred bucks. I actually can check to be sure here.
I'll make a motion to approve the.
Sixty-nine dollars we spent.
Two fifty for the chamber.
It's, we're gonna, what, we're gonna give them two fifty?
We're gonna purchase bags, the bags for the event.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next is insurance policy 2026.
Oh, boy. This was fun.
It is every year.
We, we have compared everything, apples to apples. Um, I did send you guys the, the files, they're humongous, but we're, I'm hoping that you're gonna pick a package with five million umbrella. It's for 29,425, last year we paid 26,441. Um, it would be changing us from Astra to Tokyo Marine Company, which I believe we were with a couple of years ago.
So you're decreasing to 25,899?
Uh, no, I want the five million umbrella. Well, if you want it, it's up to you. Last time we had the one mil.
Oh, you're 29,425.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I heard the wrong number, I was trying to figure out which number I heard there.
It does go up three thousand dollars, if you chose the one million umbrella, that's one million umbrella, it's actually a two million dollar policy. Um, but after we went through that and the cost of a wastewater and cost of towers, I'm thinking five million is your much safer bet for four thousand dollars, less than four thousand dollars a year. And those are replacement costs. And did you see up above where we did raise the town hall contents and we did raise, um, everything that you asked, he agreed with, very much so.
Okay. Yeah, we, we went through line by line and went through our inventory of what we had, so we made sure we got covered on everything.
Yeah, we only have like thirty thousand for the contents, it's building, I'm like, I won't even pay for the computers.
Yeah, that one, that one was bad. We had a couple, couple pieces of equipment that weren't covered. So.
And a missing water tower.
Anything with wheels needs to be insured, so.
Brandy, and a missing water tower.
Oh, that too, we only had one water tower on the policy. Well, not the policy, the quote.
Yeah.
It's on the policy now, sorry.
Max, what do you think?
If the clerk's telling me that's what we need to cover our assets, then we need to cover our assets.
So, this package?
Yeah.
No, the five mil.
Tokyo Marine, five mil umbrella.
Don?
Did you say, ma- make a motion?
I'm asking your opinion.
Oh, yeah, I think we pretty well got to. I agree with Cheryl on that.
Okay, make a motion for the Tokyo package for five million.
I'll second.
Alright, and that will be paid out of all, all three departments. Just so you guys know, it's not coming off the bottom line.
Do you pay that monthly?
Nope, we pay yearly.
Annual.
Annual.
Those kind.
And I want you to know that, just like last year, I'll be taking, um, the check on the first one it's due, cause I won't issue it till first, because we can't. Not without drawing our account into the red in the 2025 year.
Okay. Uh, last item of new business is economic development funds for digital sign.
Um, I, I know I printed these out after. Um, but this is what we have in the bank on economic development.
That's our total, what we have in economic development.
Did you make three copies by any chance?
We can share.
I've got quote.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I want them to see that one. We are asking the council to consider spending some economic development funds on a new digital sign for upfront and to restore, and revitalize the old Sunman sign there. This is only company that does that, she does have two partner companies that can quote on it. All of the other quotes I received could not do the top part of that Sunman sign, because I guess it's a special shape and they don't have the capability to do that. So, there's my, we looked up all the IC codes, um, to make sure that it was legal to spend economic development funds, opioid restricted funds. The utility is on board, um, because like they say, they can't be fixing the water main break and putting door hangers on doors. That's another form of communication. And the park department also would like to donate toward the project because they think it would help their department as well.
What we all have. Hang on.
I've got four of them.
Three. Everybody stop, I got the top page.
Oh, okay, I'm like, I got four of the same thing.
I got the top.
Here's three.
Okay, there's the top page.
Oh, you're fine. Yeah, he just did one page at a time.
I'll get one of those, you get one, Cheryl gets one. I get one. Get one.
I have one of four and three of four.
There you go, there's two.
Thank you.
I need page four.
One, I have one, two, three.
I got one, two, three, who's got four?
I think that's it, isn't it?
Yeah, I've got one, two, three, especially if you pay four pages.
Oh, it does say, and I have three of four, two of four, and one of four.
Well, it gets to the meat and potatoes of it.
Now, the meat and potatoes on page three.
On page three. Ninety-four. Ninety-four percent, huh?
So, you know, when we were applying for the grant, this did come in the highest, um, however, like I said, nobody else can touch the top of that sign and I think we need to keep it. Also, this company is offering to come back out and look again. Also willing to bring a mobile unit for us to look at, try out, play with, the exact one that we would purchase. So I was asking you to approve up to forty thousand of economic development money and I will try to come in lower than that, you know I will. We will also go after a large grant from Brooklyn County Community Foundation as well for co-funding and then the other departments of their already budgeted approved monies.
Now, the forty grand will be for what, just for the new sign and the repair of this one or for just a new one or?
The forty, so we plan on having multiple sources of funding to pay for this. Forty out of economic development, um, and then going after hopefully a large grant. And then the other departments have offered out of their already budgeted money to contribute to pay for the rest of it.
For the rest of the, a new sign?
Yeah, it'll put a digital sign out there, it will sand it, prepare it for brand new paint, they are going to re, uh, put a new white part of the sign where it says Sunman Town Hall. That will be new, it'll also be all lit up, it'll all be repainted and then the software, the sign, electrical, all, everything including.
Yep, so repurpose the structure.
Repurpose, good word.
Uh, replace the facing, which is UV grade polycarbonate, so the.
What page you on, three?
Page two of four.
Page two.
So what they'll be doing is the plastic on top, they'll basically replace it with new CNC shaped to fit the, the top. Our logo put on it, most likely. And then there'll be a double-sided electronic message center, which is LED, which will go in. And then it'll be photo cell, so it's gonna run off daylight, with the, the light in the top of it, it's gonna light in the top. Software, communication, so it'll be wireless broadband communication, all the electric for it. Uh, and then they're gonna LED retrofit the sign in, so they're gonna remove the existing, uh, halide lamps and ballast which are in there, replace with eco low voltage LEDs, which will light, that's what will light the sign up. Uh, preassemble in-house and then basically the only thing they need to do is a detailed survey for size, face radius, lighting, so it, and then, so you have a whole new sign out there. That works.
Clock people and show their speed?
We need to be careful, did, we had, I know, uh, church down in Harrison did one, did thirty grand, they paid thirty grand for a sign, nothing but trouble. The thing kept breaking and the guys come back and fix it and they fixed it underwater two or three times, they had to end up paying, you know, to get it done.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna jump right in right now, let's just talk about it and see.
I have a lot of good references on this company, I have some personal experience with them. I have a lot of good references on this company. I have some personal experience with them.
Bring the sign?
They are the ones who do, our friends up the street there at FCN Bank, they do all their signs. They do the majority of the signs in Batesville area. They do pretty much all the signs in Greensburg. I, I mean, I know it's coming from council members, but I would.
They got a good reputation.
I would give them a good referral.
Yeah.
And we won't, we still have to go through the procurement, so we still need one to two more quotes. We're just asking you to let us go and to release up to forty thousand. We kinda need a dollar amount to be able to go after quotes.
To shoot for it.
Yes. But we still will be returning with two to three quotes because we have to.
Yep.
That's true. So we're just saying, get some quotes?
Yeah, and so start the process because we didn't have in our budget forty thousand for economic development for twenty twenty six. So we'll also have to do additional appropriations.
I think it's a good idea to have the sign. I just wanna go slower.
Well, we've actually been looking into this for about eight months, and we also submitted it for a grant. But it's not infrastructure. It kinda goes to the bottom of the list on priority.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we just all can tell you after working here for years that we need it.
One of that, but also I think it modernizes this a little bit. I mean.
Yep.
Put this correct.
Right.
Well, I mean.
It's the wrong time.
You get, obviously, not on the scale and scope, but you can see it right up the street with the brand new sign at Sunman Elementary that's getting all their messages and all their information now. And all you gotta do is drive by it. Now, we're not gonna put up a Jumbotron the way they did. But we're looking for a message board that we can relay information to people at the town out there. And it, it's good for town information. It's good for your department, the fire department EMS. When we're having fundraisers, when we're having community events, we're having a market. It just, it's a good point. And right here on the main street where a lot of people, and we all know, a lot of people leave and go north and hit the interstate every morning, so it, it's in a great location, so.
It makes me wonder if we would have had a sign like this, we could have put information up. I think, uh, Ripley County Health would have done better downstairs.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, the mother thing would have done downstairs. Nobody knew they were here. You got that old antique sign out there. We put numbers on it. When like today, all the numbers are in the middle of the field over here.
Mm-hmm, yeah, with the light, with the light breeze, we were picking them up.
The company you got that bid from?
And.
I've never heard a bad word about it. I'm sure somebody's complained, but.
I, I know of a couple of other ones that are out there too that are highly reputable. We can, we'll go get quotes from and.
One in Batesville. So one in Batesville.
Yes.
Just remember, we really need to stick to the companies that are capable of repairing and restoring the top of the sign.
Greenson, Bates?
Greens in Greensburg. That's who we got to quote from.
Who's in Batesville? Who's the sign company there?
They can't do the sign.
Okay.
Okay.
That is one of my police. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. There's only two other companies that do that.
There's one in Lawrenceburg.
Yes.
That's, that's one, yeah, we'll talk to.
I don't know, they can't do the top of that sign.
And then. Trying to think. I think there's one in Columbus or Shelbyville.
I have their quote. I, I have them quoted already. They said they could light it up, but they couldn't replace, reface it.
So you're not asking to seal the deal unless.
No.
You're saying just give us the opportunity.
I, I need a dollar amount, or I can't go after quotes. I need to tailor.
Not handing her a check, Don. We're just giving.
I'm gonna still bring you back to.
Quotes and.
Permission to, permission to get started in a dollar amount of what we're looking for.
Okay, she's gonna, you're not gonna pitch you any purchases or just gonna get a quote?
No, we gotta get two more estimates.
Alright.
Just give her permission.
We have to follow the pro, I can't say that word either. We have to follow the procedure for purchasing. And if it's over a certain dollar amount, you are required to have quotes.
Oh, that's one of the things we gotta go to the county for. And come back and get this town to approve it.
No.
I'm just kidding.
Oh.
I'm just kidding. It's, we just went over that.
He's got it. He's got it right.
He's got it down.
We gotta go.
First objection's already in.
It'll be too bright. It'll be shining in somebody's bedroom window.
Yeah, that's kidding. Yeah, we're gonna go and get quotes and then I'll, I can go live with that.
You second it?
Yeah.
Okay.
If we just go quotes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I think that'll be a big step and.
Yes, thank you. It was a good idea.
Bringing something to Sunman that is gonna turn.
Can we rent it? That could be, generate some income. At the birthday, Bob, that'll cost you fifty bucks.
That's not a bad idea. Make it more reasonable than fifty bucks.
Sign in twenty five years.
My life, I don't pay fifty bucks.
Yeah.
The good thing about it is since I've been here, we haven't utilized our economic development funds on anything.
I'm, I'm gonna state that there, we're gonna put a disclaimer in that all messaging will have to be approved by someone.
I was getting ready to say was, you don't wanna.
Karen, I want a divorce.
We'll have national lampins.
Uh, you, you can be, but you're gonna answer to the news when they show up.
I thought, I was thinking more like national lampins vacation up there.
Okay, that takes us to comments from the floor. Does anybody have any comments from the?
I'm on the floor and I'd like to thank you guys for, uh, the Christmas. Appreciate your respect.
Good to go, you guys. That you're deductible. All right, well, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Seven twenty eight.
Second.
If you won't, I will, Don.